Welcome to the meeting of the Elmer Town Council for September the 18th. It's nice to see such a full gallery. Anyway, let's begin with, notice the absence, begin with the moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, confirmation of the agenda.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of September 18th, 2024 as amended by adding the following items: press release, September 18th, 2024, respecting the town of Elmer receiving funding through the Housing Enabling Water System Fund for sanitary lagoon optimization.
Thank you. Moving on to second, Deputy Ranger Barber, Counselor Chapman. All those in favor, carry. Item four, declaration of community area interests, are there any? None. Item five, delegations, we welcome Delene Van Zyl from Elgin County Library regarding the library branch super performance report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Crockett, councilors and staff of the town of Elmer. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report on the performance of the Elmer Old Town Hall Library. My name is Delene Van Zyl and I have been the branch supervisor of the Elmer Library for the last seven years. I want to acknowledge that we have Brian Michelli, Director of Community and Cultural Services, in attendance here tonight. In my presentation, I am going to emphasize the following core components of a public library: community, collection, programs, and staff, and then discuss the same four within the framework of the library planning guidelines. Our David Lancaster said, "Bad libraries build collections; good libraries build services; great libraries build communities." The Elmer Library serves the largest population in the Elgin County library system and is the only branch classified as a large branch. Given its strategic importance, the county allocates more resources to Elmer in terms of both hours and staffing. Notably, it is the only branch with a dedicated supervisor, while supervisors at other branches are responsible for overseeing two or even three libraries. Although Elmer is just one of 10 branches in the system, it serves 32% of Elgin residents, nearly 16,000. Rather than being treated as a typical branch, Elmer should be regarded as a small urban library, requiring a dynamic facility that reflects its unique status. The library's impact extends far beyond those with library cards. In line with trends seen in more urban communities, the Elmer Library is increasingly becoming a living space for the town. Every day, we welcome community members who use the library as an office, whether they are using the public computers, printing labels for online returns, or utilizing our wireless services for their own devices. Others treat the library as their living room, coming to the read magazines, daily newspapers, play board games, and meet up with friends. Importantly, these services and many more are accessible to everyone regardless of whether they have a library card. Our vision is for the Elmer Library to be an integral part of the community, a partner in the lives of everyone who calls us town home. To achieve this, we actively seek opportunities to connect and collaborate with various organizations and businesses in this area. Take note that some of these initiatives are countywide, but Elmer Library is an active partner in these. In partnership with the VON, the Books to Go program delivers books to homebound patrons, ensuring they stay connected to the library. The MCS, examples of a partnership developed over years are: last week, we celebrated Menonite Heritage Week with a big display acknowledging our patrons' heritage. A group of women from the organization's Facebook program visits the library annually, helping new community members become aware of the library's services. The library hosts regular class visits from several local schools like McGregor, Assumption, East Elgin Secondary School, to name a few. Library staff visit the early on site at McGregor weekly to read books to children, and the library also hosts early on programs where actively participate in their community events. Library staff contributes to the summer and Christmas in Elgin editions of the Elmer Express, sharing news and updates. Although all library branches collaborate with the brick radio station for its Check It In, Check It Out Children's Program, the proximity of the Elmer Library makes it especially convenient for staff to record episodes regularly. This show airs weekly on the station. A librarian from the Ministry of the Solicitor General visits the branches and selects some of our discarded materials to be used in the library's incorrectional facilities. We include terrace lodge in programs as well as providing materials to the residents, both from the branch and through our recently launched bookmobile service. The library's collection is dynamic, constantly evolving to meet the needs of our community and to adapt to emerging trends. The French for Homeschoolers program at Elmer led to the addition of a collection of French graphic novels. We've also introduced healthy brain kits, developed in collaboration with the St. Thomas Elgin Alzheimer's Society, as well as puzzles, board games, yodel players, and much more. Now, this is where Elmer always looks good: circulation statistics. The graph on the left hand shows from 2020 how our circulation has increased every year and with a circulation of 71,720 items last year. To put this in perspective, in 2022, Elmer's circulation accounted for 32.3% of the total items circulated across 10 branches. In 2023, that went up to 35.4%, and this year, for the first seven months, this percentage has increased to 37.64%. Programs: the Elmer Library offers a variety of age-specific programs that are standard in any library: storytimes, after-school programs, summer reading club, book clubs. But we also have some unique programs that reflect the needs and interests of our community. A large group of parents who homeschool created a demand for French language programs. The Elmer Library is fortunate to have a staff member fluent in French, which led to the creation of the French for Homeschoolers program. This program has 30-plus kids attending at any given time. The popularity of our memoir writing program revealed that readers have a deep interest in personal stories. This insight inspired the Stories We Tell program, an intimate gathering where local individuals share their personal stories in the cozy setting of the library's red chairs. This program has become a cherished event, bringing the community together to listen and connect. Now in its second year, the Art in the Park has become a highlight of the library's programming. This program showcases local artists, musicians, and food vendors, creating a vibrant and enjoyable experience for all attendees. In 2024, next week, we will host our sixth annual quilt show, which has grown significantly since its inception in 2019. The show has expanded from being held solely in the library to also utilizing the upstairs theater. In 2023, we partnered with local businesses to display quilts made by the Hearts and Hands Guild, a group of ladies who create quilts for cancer patients at the St. Thomas Elgin Hospital. Additionally, we introduced vendors to the show for the first time, adding another layer of community involvement and support. Last year, we had over 1,000 attendees with the majority from out of town. Staff. The most important asset of any library goes home at night, the library staff. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Healy, who was the director of the New York Public Library. The ladies and gentlemen of the Elmer Library are talented, incredibly creative, hardworking, and dedicated to the library and this community. Their talents and abilities complement each other to make an excellent team that is indeed more than the individual team members. Library Planning Guidelines and the Elmer Old Town Hall Library. According to the most recent Planning Guidelines for the Public Library Services within county systems, also known as the RUPL guidelines, the Elmer Library is operating with only about 20% of the space recommended for a large branch library. To be precise, it's actually 19.57%. While this might seem like an academic issue to some, the reality of running a full library service in just one-third of the space it should have has significant implications for everyone in our community. As I emphasized earlier in this presentation, the library serves the broader community, not just those who actively hold library cards. It is a safe and welcoming meeting space for everyone and often the first place people think of when seeking a location to gather or meet. We receive weekly requests from agencies, organizations, businesses for meeting space. While we welcome them to use the library, we cannot guarantee they will find an available spot, and any space they do find is public and can be quite noisy. We have no way to measure how many people have simply stopped asking us for space due to these limitations. The lack of dedicated meeting space has real consequences. Social workers are forced to meet clients on the front staircase leading to the theater, and a tutor from Thames Valley District School Board often has no choice but to work at a table just a few feet away from a busy circulation desk. The library is home to the only public washroom in this part of downtown where people aren't required to make a purchase to use the restroom, and it is open year-round. Many businesses have closed their washrooms, directing customers to the library instead. Unfortunately, while our washroom displays a wheelchair accessibility sign, it is far from truly accessible. Collection: despite the Elmer Library accounting for over 35% of the county's total circulation, we receive only 21% of new materials because of space constraints. This imbalance impacts several key functions of the library. Patrons are less likely to find items they seek on our shelves, leading them to place holes on materials from other branches. This in turn increases the size of the mail runs to Elmer and demands more staff time to process them. Moreover, a large proportion of our patrons are from the low German-speaking community, adding a significant diversity element to our collection needs. Our collection should reflect the unique needs of this large percentage of patrons and the broader community's diversity. However, the lack of shelf space makes this impossible. As a result, the materials we do have experience heavy use, leading to quicker wear and tear and ultimately the need to discard items. The Elmer Library is also the only branch with six-foot-high shelving. Transitioning to a more accessible shelving would significantly reduce our collection size. According to the RUPL guidelines, the Elmer Library should house between 24,000 and 50,000 items. Currently, we are barely above the minimum threshold of 28,000, and removing the top shelves would undoubtedly push us below it. Programs: the lack of dedicated program space significantly impacts our ability to run library programs efficiently. Staff must spend additional time preparing for each program as they need to rearrange furniture and retrieve supplies from storage. This reduces time available for program delivery and plan. Moreover, the limited space restricts the number of attendees we can accommodate, often requiring us to repeat programs multiple times to ensure everyone interested has a chance to participate. The absence of a dedicated program space forces us to use existing areas of the library for activities, which limits access for other patrons. When a program is running, a section of the library being used becomes temporarily inaccessible. Since we often use the children's area for programs, it is primarily the children who are unable to browse and select books during these times. For instance, weekly visits from the kindergarten classes from McGregor, which can include groups for up to 40 people, make parts of the library, such as the computers, the reading area, and the tables at the back unavailable to other patrons for the duration of the visit. Staff: The staff room measuring nine by 12 serves multiple purposes for our team of seven. It functions as a break room, a space for program preparation, and the area where we handle the mail run two days a week. On average, we receive about 10 boxes of items that need to be scanned and processed all within this confined space. When welcoming new staff members, we often comment that they'll need to adjust to the lack of personal space at work, while also hoping they have ample storage space at home. Shortage of storage space means that some of the equipment required for programs such as the quilt show, Art in the Park, and even our Christmas decorations are stored in the basements, garages, and attics of staff members. The Elmer Library is a true success story despite the challenges we face. It would be a different situation if the library were underutilized, but that's far from the case. We attract hundreds of visitors daily, providing essential services to the community at a high level, even as we contend with serious facility limitations. I am confident that our team at Elgin County Library will soon present a vision to collaborate with the town on expanding the library to better serve our growing community, a library that residents can be proud of and with the support to make it happen.
Thank you, Ms. Van Zyl. Counsel, questions or comments? Counselor Disrosi.
Just a comment that was very well done, Delene. Thank you very much for that.
Anyone else? Okay. Yes, thank you very much, Delene, for that report, very thorough, very clear on where the Elmer Library's good points and deficiencies lie. We have a recommendation?
Yes, that the presentation from Delene Van Zyl, Elgin County Library, library branch supervisor regarding the 2023-2024 Elmer Library Performance Report be received as information.
Moving on to second, Counselor Bun, raise, and Counselor is last. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes, carry. Thank you. Next delegation is Mr. Kirk Burns from the Elmer Library Expansion Supporters. Mr. Burns.
Mayor Crockett, council members, thanks very much for hearing my presentation tonight. I put on new socks thinking that I would get some camera time, and I forgot that I'm not shown from this particular vantage point. And I did offer to Arthur before to change spots, but he wanted the change to be permanent, and so I knew I was going no place with that particular suggestion. Anyway, I'll have to watch it on TV later to hear how things go. I also was surprised at the size of the gallery that came out tonight to hear Delene's presentation. And I brought my wife Bonnie, just in case, I had no supporters, so I'm glad that there was considerable support for Delene. So, I'll try and be as brief as I can. You have heard a fair amount of noise recently with the presentation that Cynthia Grant made earlier this summer, and with your handout on the RUPL guidelines and Delene's presentation, and Brian Michelli's presentation to Elgin County Council last week, as hopefully there is a little more attention being circulated and presented to you about the need for library expansion. And I am with a group, ELES, or Elmer Library Expansion Supporters, and briefly, we formed about 10 years ago because we thought library expansion was imminent at that time. Committees have actually been talking about library expansion for 20 years, and we thought we would enhance that process at the time. And we worked hard, we were quite diligent, we did council presentations, we did a petition, we did letters to the editor, we had speakers, we were quite busy. However, we spent a fair amount of our time just fighting the direction by various councils to relocate the library away from the core, and we thought it was important that it stay in the core. So, a fair amount of our time was spent in deflection and not in getting much progress on library expansion. So, we disbanded essentially with COVID, and we just reorganized in January because we thought times were a little more favorable, and we were post-COVID, but also because we sensed that there was no message coming to council in terms of reviving library expansion as a priority. So, the noise that's been generated lately and the interest of my particular group is in having that direction followed. So, to the point, we are asking that council make this a priority and make a commitment. We think that we are long overdue in this particular decision. And regardless of any budget plans that may not include library expansion at this time, we think it's time that we start planning for that down the road, that it's going to require a little preparation. And as soon as we can. So, some key questions that you might have. First of all, are libraries relevant? As you saw with the previous presentation, first of all, yes. Mr. Michelli would say that statistics show that library use is up, and not just in the county. Libraries are still very important to communities. And as Delene noted, that libraries are not just a book place, but are there for meeting places, for technological hubs, and certainly to serve the diverse community that we have, very important for our community. So, many purposes there, making libraries very relevant today. As well, by keeping the library downtown and keeping it up to date, it enhances Elmer's business core, and we've had the BIA very much in support of this particular direction over the years, and I think they realize the value for them as well with that. Another question, is it a reasonable priority at this time? We were shocked when we saw a recent Express headline that said that council was prioritizing a different direction, that of a recreational bent down the road, with a costly study involved. And we're thinking, well, the library has been out there for 20 years, more than 20 years, and we have a fairly moderate, for the situation, a fairly moderate cost. We have lots of work prepared in terms of location and design, and we also think that we serve a fairly wide base with this particular project. Also, Elmer has, over the years, since council, sorry, yeah, since council committees were formed, made a number of moves for different public buildings, be it a fire department or a police building, or redesigning town council, or the arena, or Parks Building, or water tower, lots of so-called public facilities. So, why wouldn't library expansion also be a priority in that time period? Because certainly Elmer has moved in those other areas too. Have other towns prioritized library services? Yes, in our research, even from 10 years ago, and we tried to make ourselves fairly expert in this particular area, we see that Elmer has become quite deficient in size of building. We know Strathroy, Ingersoll, St. Mary's, all $10,000 to $12,000, 10,000 square feet. If we get away with $10,000, that would be very, very enhancing for this project. We know Delhi, Godrich, Portover, smaller cashman areas, but also 9,000 square feet. We know in Elgin County, we sit at 3,100 square feet. Springfield, 3,100 square feet. Dutton, 4,400 square feet, or, sorry, Strathfield, 4,400 square feet, and Dutton, perhaps I'm off here, but, yeah, 3,500 square feet. So, we are certainly deficient in terms of the size of our building compared to other areas. Again, you know, why would Elmer pass on expanding essential services if other communities have years ago decided that this should have been a priority, that particular advantage for their particular community? And is there community and financial support, another question? Yes, the survey, your recent survey indicated community support. We did a petition seven, eight years ago indicating very strong support. We've had support, as I say, from the BIA and good indication that there is good community support. And certainly, we know that the county has been on board with this project for a number of years. And concerning funding, we know from the county report that Elmer is missing out on some monies because of the size of the present library. And we also, our research, even seven, eight years ago, indicated that we could build what we think is a very reasonable library that would cost Elmer taxpayers less than $10 a year, and that's before any fundraising is done. So, yes, indeed, we believe that there is strong community and financial support for that, for this project. So, what can you do, you ask? We think that it's now that we need to have council make this a priority. We don't think the project is extravagant, and we think that Elmer deserves what other communities have with a very moderate cost and something that needs to be a commitment right now. It is part of what we think is a very progressive vision for Elmer. And I know the end result of this could be a receive and file, and I've been received and filed before, and it's painful, but you get over it, and we're asking for something more than that. We're asking for a commitment at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burns. Are there any questions or comments from council? Are there any questions or comments from council?
I'd like to make, and then I see that Counselor Roseau here hand up, but I'd like to make a comment, and I'll come back to you, okay? Where do I begin? It's been a long time since council has discussed the library. It's kind of, council may have some sort of library discussion withdrawal that maybe can prove. The library comes with a lot of baggage, and we've had 20 years of it. So, let's throw away the baggage. Let's get some new bags. I hear applause, but you may not like the rest of it, I don't know. I think that, you know, in terms of new baggage, I'm hearing, new bags, I'm hearing that the county is in a different position from where it was 10 years ago. And I think that we need to take a look at what that different position may be. I heard Delene talk about collaboration with Elmer and the county, and at the last county meeting, there was a talk about collaboration and cooperation, and I think maybe, maybe now is the time to, to take a look at what a new process would look like. And I guess I'm asking council, what kind of an appetite do you see for asking, asking staff to bring a report forward in terms of what we can do to cooperate and collaborate with the county? What kind of process, a new process, might look like? I understand that the current policy on the library is let it lie until there's fundraising, but I think there may be room for fundraising and collaboration and other kinds of new bags with the county. So, I would certainly welcome a motion to ask for a staff report on this. Counselor Roseau.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't agree more with you. That's exactly, actually, what I was going to propose, was an amendment to the motion to request that staff prepare some sort of report outlining further information and considerations for council, based off the delegations from Ms. Delene and from Kirk, and I guess 6.1.2 as well. So, just bag them all together and get some recommendations from staff about, just some discussion points that we can kind of bounce off of as council. So, thank you.
I don't think it needs to be an amendment, we'll just make a separate motion for that first, but I'll hear what others have to say first. I think Counselor Chapman.
That's what I was going to request as well, is that we send it back to staff and see what we can do with collaborating with the county.
Counselor Ozilich.
Well, your worship, I've been on various library committees in the last 14 years. I support the motion.
We don't have the motion yet, it was coming. Counselor Van Rys.
Thanks through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment, I don't know if I should here, but I believe more people showed up tonight for the library discussions than for the pool. So, yeah, I think it's something, I support that.
You're right, we really haven't had a discussion.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. I think the most important consideration that council has to look at is the potential for a new cooperative funding for a library, if there was a different way to make the building happen. It was mentioned that 16,000 people are in the catchment area, there's 8,000 people in Elmer. At the present time, those 8,000 people have to pay all of the cost, the capital cost, for a new library. If there was something broader, where the county was brought into this, that would make it more palatable for this area, it has some merit. And on that basis, if the motion was, a potential motion was based on that criteria, that would be a good thing.
I see support for the motion, I'm going to say that Counselor Roseau moves it, and Counselor Chapman seconded, and so are the first few to mention it. Is there any further discussion on motion to send it to staff? Do you have any wording that we could use?
Yes, the motion would read that the delegation from Kirk Behrens regarding Elmer library expansion be received for information, and that council directs staff to prepare a report on possible collaboration with the county on library services and library facilities.
Okay.
Further comment? Deputy Mayor.
Friendly amendment, can that also include funding? But then the mover and seconder be acceptable?
Okay, so the Counselor Ozilich.
I leave, I believe libraries are important.
So do we all, I guess. Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I will call the question, all those in favor of the motion, and it is carried, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Behrens.
Good, thank you.
Next item, 5.3, Mr. Jaden Ball, delegating regarding youth-led free skate event. Mr. Ball.
Jaden, do you want us to stay or no? We can stay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and town councilors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Jaden Ball, and I'm 17 years old. I'm the president of the Black Student Association and co-president of the Girls and Boys Athletic Association at my high school, East Duggan, here in Elmer. I'm also the co-founder of Ball Skate, a skating instruction program that I facilitate in partnership with my mom, who's a former Olympian. I have also played hockey with the Elmer Flames since I was three years old. I'm passionate about social justice and inclusion and equality, and want to promote celebrating diversity. I have noticed through my participation in various sports and community events that there is an underrepresentation of diverse cultures in our rural communities. I hope to bring some awareness to this and provide and inspire new opportunities for those of different cultural, racial, or religious backgrounds. In my personal experience, I'm often the only person of color on my sports teams or on school committees. I've heard other Black, Indigenous, or people of color say that they feel alone or isolated in their small-town experience. This is my last year of high school, and I think now is the time that I take action. So, I am hosting a free youth-led event called Breaking the Ice on September, on Saturday, October 5th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the East Duggan Community Complex. To bring awareness to this issue, I'll be offering a free skate for the public, but hope to specifically invite those from diverse backgrounds to try skating. Those attending who do not have skates will have access to public skate rentals for no cost. This event will also be holding across-cultural community displays, where many community agencies and entrepreneurs will have display tables marketing their resources and services. There will be a number of diverse cultures representing, represented at this event. We will hear from three guest speakers, and the event will be emceed by Nessel Long, who is the project associate of Office of Equity and Diversity at Western University. And of course, we will have snacks and refreshments. My greatest hope is to encourage and promote a sense of belonging for diverse populations in our community. Through this event, I hope to shed light on the importance of cultural representation, where our differences are celebrated and seen, and where our experiences are validated. Thank you so much for your support and partnership in creating a more inclusive and accepting community for both youth and adults of our, all backgrounds, races, and cultures. I hope to see you at my event. Again, thank you for allowing me to share my message with you this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ball. Thank you for the presentation and the offer. Very good. Do we have any comments from council? Counselor Chapman.
Jaden, I just want to say thank you for coming forward and presenting it to us, but also for being a youth and coming forward with such an amazing activity, and sharing culture is amazing, so thank you.
Counselor Ozilich.
Jason, well, well done.
Thank you.
Jaden. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. To Jaden, it takes a lot of courage to stand up before people that you don't know on a topic you're very passionate about. I give you a lot of credit for having the courage to do so.
Counselor Van Rys.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. To Jaden, thank you for coming up and presenting to council. When I heard about your event, I got very excited because I think this is something the community needs. We have a lot of new families coming in from many different cultures that are moving into our community, and having a family that, having a multicultural family with biracial children, I think what you're doing here is setting up for even my children to be more welcome, feel more welcome in the community. So, this is one step in the right direction, and hopefully will lead to some positive change and awareness, maybe turn into a yearly event for you to come back after you're gone off the university, and come back and continue to help us out. So, I just wanted to thank you. I appreciate, and you should be really proud of what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Jaden, and during your last year at East Duggan, it's not very often that we have students from East Duggan come to speak before council, and it's very important that the youth of the community know what happens at municipal councils, and that it's quite easy to come here and talk to us, so spread the word.
I will, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, the resolution reads that the delegation from Jaden Ball regarding youth-led free skate event be received for.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Van Rys? And Counselor Ozilich? All those in favor? It's carried, thank you. Item 6, Consent Agenda Resolution?
That the September 18th, 2024 consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2024.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Roseau? Counselor Chapman? Any questions or comments? Counselor Chapman.
For item 6.1.3, I'd just like to thank Zonk Horvath for his time with us, and congratulate Deputy Chief Johnston for his appointment to chief.
Thank you. Any other comments? Certainly add my comments to Counselor Chapman, and Zonk has served this community well for a number of years, and it'd be sad to see him go, but it's a sweet sorrow in the sense that Kyle Johnson is taking over, so a smooth transition for the police service board, and so, thank you. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. We have 7, 7.1, Manager of Planning and Development, dealing with the Aim Parkway, resolution?
That Report Plan 27-24, Dedicated Land, Dedicated Lands for Public Highway, Aim Parkway, and White Street Extension be received for information purposes, and that the Council of the Town of Elmer approve bylaw.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Chapman and Deputy Mayor Barber. Terry.
Thank you. Through your worship to members of council, I'll keep this brief, it's kind of a, kind of a housekeeping report. The report that's before you is for a bylaw to dedicate lands at Aim Park as a public highway. The legal survey was completed for the lands, and the town can now dedicate certain lands as a public highway, or what it's known as Town Right-of-Way. If you refer to the attached illustration, the red area on the picture is the extension of White Street, and the green area is the new Aim Parkway. Street signs and line painting have been completed on site and the road, and on the roadways, and they're ready to be incorporated into the town system. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Council? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. To Terry, when the bylaws passed and the roads become part of the Town of Elmer, are we ready to assume winter maintenance? Is that, or is that a requirement at this particular time?
Through your worship to Counselor Barber, yes, we would be assuming all the winter maintenance and all other maintenance at that time, and we are ready for that at this point.
Counselor Chapman.
Through your worship, I just want to say it's exciting to see this happen. It started in last term of council, and to see it come to fruition, it's just part of the growth of our town, and I'm very excited to see, and I hope it fills up quickly.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor of the motion, it's carried. 7.1, 7.12, Director of Infrastructure, Summer Pedestrian Count.
That Report Operations 21-24, entitled Summer Pedestrian Count, John Street South and Alexander Drive, PXO Analysis Be Received as Information.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Roseau? Counselor Chapman? Terry, you're going to?
Thank you. Through your worship, this report relates to an ongoing PXO crossing analysis at the intersection of John Street and Alexander Drive. Previous report was presented to council, which showed that pedestrian counts did not warrant a PXO crossing, but through the report, council selected several options for staff follow-up. This report presents the findings of a summer pedestrian count that was obtained. The count was conducted on a nice day from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The results show that the summer pedestrian crossing volumes still did not warrant a PXO crossing. They are slightly less than half of what's required in Book 15. The other option for a sidewalk connection to Alexander is currently in the planning and design phase, and the final option is to conduct a count once full build-out of the development in the area has occurred, and staff will follow up at that time. On that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Council? Counselor Roseau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Terry for following up on this. It's something that was obviously very important to me and residents in this area specifically. I think implementing that sidewalk on the east side of John Street is really going to resolve a lot of the issues that we were encountering with this specific area, and I think it's a great idea, obviously, once that development has progressed, that we reassess at that time. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Just a quick follow-up, tentative construction of sidewalks on John Street next year may change the pedestrian count, and with development, maybe in time, maybe a short period of time, they may be warranted, or the crossing may be warranted.
Anyone else?
Seeing no one, all those in favor, as carried. 7.13, Director of Operations, John Street North Bridge Mural Resolution?
That Report Operations 22-24, entitled Program Recommendation, John Street North Bridge Mural and Community Mural Program Be Received as Information, and that council accepts the recommendation from the P-VAC for the implementation of the Community Mural Program and John Street Bridge Mural as outlined in the report, and that the report be forwarded to the Finance Committee for consideration.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Chapman, Counselor Ozilich? And who's doing that, Rob?
Thank you, your worship. This report recommends council consider two key initiatives. One is a mural on the John Street North Bridge Abutment, the one that faces Bell Morale Park, and the second is the implementation of a.
Annual mural program in the town.
As the council is aware, the Parks and Beautification Committee looks for opportunities to recommend beautification initiatives within the town, and that the John Street North Bridge Abutment came up as one of those possible candidates. It's been kind of described as a little bit unsightly, as you sit in the park and you can see the splash pad and all the work that's been done in Bell Morale. With that underway, I want to thank the mayor, who approached the county staff to just get a feeling whether this was something that was even possible. The mayor, to paraphrase the county staff, "subject to final review and approval and a formal request," is something that they could support to their council. So, with that in mind, the Parks and Beautification Committee developed sort of an expression of interest that we feel would be engaging for the community, allow an opportunity for a public participation and comments on a potential mural, and then give council the final decision on the selection of the mural and the implementation of all of that. So, the expression of interest that's in there is draft, and if council has any comments, we'd be happy to take them, but we think it's probably a pretty good process. Through that work, it was kind of identified that perhaps an annual mural program might be something that council should consider. It's, it would be an opportunity, if an opportunity arose where we could put a mural somewhere, or council wanted to look at it, we would have the expression of interest that we developed for the John Street, John Street North Bridge Mural as sort of the template. John Street North Bridge mural as sort of the template. And that there would be certainly no obligation to go forward with anything, but if the opportunity arose, it would be available to the council. So with that, I have some staff comments as well. This does represent a small, you know, increase in the workload for staff. We feel probably it is manageable at this time, given the way that the program is set up. And should council consider this program, we would recommend rather than the capital budget, which is kind of an annual program and that process is kind of lengthy and only happens once a year, we would recommend that the budget be set in the operational budget. And that way it would be available. If the opportunity arose, it would be part of the operational budget. And also for the cost as well. A capital program of $2,000 seems that we could accommodate it in our operational program. And I would remind council that any of our operational programs, if we don't unveil ourselves of them, they simply roll into the annual surplus or deficit. So there would be no obligation for council to undertake a mural program in any given year, just like in snow plowing, if we have a light winter, that money just simply goes back into the surplus or deficit at the end of the year. So staff would suggest that's probably the best spot to park the money as the opportunities arise through the year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, your worship.
Thank you. Just to comment on your operational program budget, I think we don't need to approve anything like that today. Heather can just add it to the operational budget when we discuss that in finance committee. Okay. Counsel. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. A mural program, should it evolve, certainly can add some life to some dreary and drab corners and create a little bit of excitement. It would be nice to see if it's applicable in the future.
Further comment? Counselor Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that I'm fully supportive of this program. I think we have a lot of spaces within our town that are potential canvases that can be, you know, an enriching space if it was simply revamped with, you know, an artist's touch. So I fully support this program. I think it's a great thing and I think it will leave a lasting positive impact on our town. Thank you.
I would certainly agree with that. I think the mural program is a great addition to what the town is doing. One comment I would have, I noticed that the report talks about annual murals on town land and I would like to see that expanded to private buildings. I think that can be done. It's done in lots of places. And some point in the future, perhaps staff can take a look at how we can handle, because there's lots of canvases out there, as Counselor Rosier says, there's lots of canvases on private buildings and that would really, really be great to see murals on those. Other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor. Seven point one four, C A O, Elgin County Centralized Planning Resolution.
That report C A O forty-five dash twenty-four respecting Elgin County centralized planning be received for information and that council direct the mayor to sign the attached letter on behalf of council and submit to Elgin County Council for consideration.
Moving secondar, Deputy Mayor Barber, Counselor Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is in response to a report that went to Elgin County Council at their first meeting in September and was referred to local councils for comment. Certainly, I've worked previously with the county's current director of planning and have a great deal of respect for him, so I just want to outline that before I say the negative stuff. But, you know, Elmer has some significant concerns with the county expanding to provide these services to lower tiers. I did appear before county council about a year ago on the direction of council to talk about their official plan. And one of the things that I said to Elgin County Council at that time was encourage them to fill their own internal planning team. This goes beyond filling their own internal team, though. This is providing services that are currently provided by lower-tier municipalities. For a lot of municipalities in Elgin County, they've had trouble establishing their own planning departments and this could fix their immediate issues. I struggle, however, to see how the county has outlined a larger value proposition beyond that. Some consideration to whether there's value in the county providing what is already an existing level of service. What are the costs associated to the county taking that on? Would it not be simply more cost-effective to continue with the current provision of services by lower tiers? So I don't know where the county's pitch for centralization really lands because, you know, it's a challenge on their end when they don't own most of the essential infrastructure for growth. The water systems, the wastewater systems, it's still going, you're still going to require the local staff to tell you, tell developers whether or not they need the allocations and to support developers through their building and local input's going to be needed to determine what kind of development is acceptable for each community. So I don't see how you're going to really come up with an efficiency when that's the situation we're in, whereas many of the other county systems that they looked at are quite different. Oxford County, for instance, has, in the municipal act, assigned all of the wastewater and water systems directly to them. So they oversee that. That's not the case here where lower tiers really drive growth in their communities. Elmer is perhaps unique to the other. I always say Elmer's unique, but we are. We're unique compared to the other lower tiers in the fact that Elmer has been so successful and our success in terms of planning has been kind of recognized locally. Really, it was such a huge investment in front-loading, realizing that developers needed the supports to get their developments through and to bring on the staff and ability to really fast-track this and really business-focused. That investment really is part of a parcel of why we were able to secure even large grant fundings. We just today had the $4.56 million announcement of the Housing Enabling Water System Fund. That's because we have the people in place who know the systems and can apply for those grants for us. So there is a benefit to having and retaining the staff at the local level. So in our letter, council may not want to take as strong or aggressive a position with Elgin County. So you'll see the letter is much more softer on those terms, but we're still hitting the essential points. And I do think that it's kind of important that county council takes a little bit more time, a little bit more due diligence, specifically to look at the staffing and the extent of any cost and how, you know, whether it's born on the lower tier or upper tier, those are still costs for Elgin County taxpayers. So we want to make sure that this is a cost-effective system and that people aren't assuming additional cost for a service that was generally the same as what is provided. And with that, I'll try my best to answer any questions of council.
I just want to make a few points in addition. When this is brought up, there was no thought at that term by the county to take a look at what the lower municipalities wanted in this. So after a long discussion at council, we decided that we would ask what the lower tiers wanted. And certainly Elmer is in a very unique position in the county. We're always kind of the outlier when it comes to county items. And part of the stuff that struck me was that there is no provision in this particular proposal. Like Andy before, I say anything bad, that the person who put this together is really very competent and very, you know, able to do this. But there was no provision in this at all in terms of opting in or opting out or exactly how it was going to be cost, is going to be cost so that if the county provides service to one of the municipalities, that all of the municipalities have to pay for that particular person. None of that has been worked out yet. So hopefully this will be discussed in the future. And certainly if we look at the number of people that the county is looking to employ in the next five years, I guess through the four-phase program, you're looking at fourteen people and $1.14 million at this point. And of course, that would be more. Now, maybe it's needed, maybe not. I don't know. But we need to take a very close look at what this program involves. It may help many of the municipalities in Elgin, but I don't know how much help it will be for Elmer. So this kind, this letter kind of lays out some of the issues to be discussed at the next meeting. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. My concern is the costing issue. If we're not using a service that the county is providing to others, I hope we don't have to pick up some of their expenses.
Well, that's one of the proposals. I don't think we're going to go that way, hopefully.
The other thing is as well, if another municipality is using the planning services and the other municipalities aren't, we shouldn't have to pay for another municipality. I know that it's a tier system, but if one municipality is receiving more services than the others, it's not fair that the others pay for their services.
Sounds like something that Elmer could say often. Any other comment? Counselor Ozlatch.
Why don't we opt out of the tier system in Elgin County?
Not yet. We could opt and become a separate city like St. Thomas.
We don't want to include that in the letter to the county.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. Thank you. New business in matters of urgency? Notice of motion. Wait, Counselor Rosier's notice of motion. So do we, I want to read that first.
Sure. Whereas women make up fifty-two percent of the community population, but just eighteen percent of mayors and twenty-five percent of counselors. And whereas similarly, according to our recent community census, women make up fifty-two percent of the town of Elmer population, yet currently represent twenty-eight percent of elected officials. And whereas decisions made with women's participation are more likely to reflect the true community and whereas our community needs the resources, knowledge, and skills that women have to offer. And whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has launched the Protege Program, providing the tools necessary for municipalities to offer a mentorship program aimed at increasing the involvement of young women by matching them with counselors. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Elmer council endorse and offer the Protege Program to engage young women interested in becoming municipal leaders.
Counselor Rosier has moved that. Do we have a secondar? Counselor Ozlatch. Counselor Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope that council has had a chance to read through the Prodigy Program Guide that was circulated with the notice of motion, which really details the scope of the program and kind of the ins and outs of that. This initiative is both timely and crucial in addressing the gender imbalance in municipal leadership. Despite women compromising fifty-two percent of our population, they are underrepresented in elected positions, holding only twenty-eight percent of these roles. This disparity highlights the need for proactive measures to ensure that our decision-making bodies more accurately reflect the diversity of our community. The Prodigy Program launched by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities offers a valuable opportunity to bridge this gap by providing mentorship and guidance to young women aspiring to enter municipal leadership. By matching them with experienced counselors, we can equip these emerging leaders with the resources, knowledge, skills, and confidence they need to contribute effectively to our governance. Importantly, there is no financial cost associated with implementing this program, making it an accessible and impactful choice for our community. Engaging women in municipal roles not only enriches our decision-making process, but also ensures that our policies and initiatives are more representative of the response, of and responsive to the needs of our community. I am confident that this program will foster a more inclusive and dynamic leadership environment here in Elmer and I urge council to embrace and support this initiative as a step towards a more equitable and effective local government. And with that, I can attempt to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Counsel. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. First, let me assure everyone that I fully support and appreciate the diversity of the Elmer area and the inclusion of all peoples. I would like to remind everyone that diversity was demonstrated in the previously elected council that was comprised of four women and for a period was under the direction of a woman's C A O. During that period, there were issues that everyone did not agree to and that was as it should be. At the end of the day, through the decision of council, though the decision of council was supported by everyone and was not questioned, that is the democratic process. The notice of motion before us tonight refers to a dated F C M program. Perhaps there are better ways. If there is a systematic reason why some segment of the population is challenged to participate in council, let's identify that and if we can, fix it. I do not support offering special programs for select individuals. Programming must be open to anyone. Prior to the last election, information sessions were offered throughout the county. Excuse me. And for successful candidates, training is offered by the A M O to better inform new counselors of their role and responsibilities. I suggest that we direct staff to prepare a report on how prospective candidates could be better informed and prepared. That program, if supported by council, to be implemented for the next municipal election cycle.
Anyone else in council? Before I give Counselor Rosier the last word on this, I guess I want to make a comment as well on this. I certainly, I certainly support the concept. I think a mentoring concept is a workable, shown-to-be-effective manner to bring people into training for one thing or another. I'm just dubious about whether we need a huge bureaucracy to do this, right? Certainly, there is no, there are no financial implications, but I think there are things we haven't thought of in terms of if we decide to make this program the policy of the town of Elmer, there are certain things I would like answered and I think that, I'm not, I don't know the answers to them and I think perhaps staff needs to take a closer look. I'm thinking of, you know, what kind of policies do we need to change? What kind of responsibilities do we have in terms of this mentoring program? What kind of town resources are we going to use? What kind of legal issues would we have with the program? Like, I don't know the answers to those kinds of things. And we're a small community. I can see, you know, a city like Edmonton, who started this program, I think, having the, you know, having the resources to do something like this and they had a very specific need. I don't know whether we do or not. But before I, before I think council should consider this, and I say I can support the concept, okay? Before council should consider this, I think staff needs to take a look at some of the implications of doing this. And so I certainly welcome a resolution to ask staff a report on that. I'll give Captain the last word. I can get Councilor Van Rees.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I think this is something that is worth taking a look at. And we just had a delegation that spoke about diversity and inclusion and multicultural, multicultural families moving into the area. And I think I would support a staff report that kind of dives deeper into this to look and see what resources would be involved or what options there are, because again, it's something we haven't looked at before. So I would support that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just several points to touch on. Firstly, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Barber, for your comments and I can appreciate some of the points that you've made. Specifically, the prior council that we had was a very progressive council. We had four counselors that were female and a C A O that was female as well. And I would say that's wonderful. However, I feel like that progress that was made kind of went out the window when we had a, well, we didn't even have an election this year. We were all acclaimed and there was only two women that actually put their name forward. So I think that speaks volumes. As far as, you know, providing a program that's applicable to everyone, understandably so, this program reflects my demographic specifically. There's nothing preventing anyone from this council who wishes to implement a similar program for whatever their reasons are. As far as having a huge bureaucracy, as Mayor Cookett said, the program is pretty much laid out for you here in this guide, which was excellent to have from F C M. I don't see the need to have a huge bureaucracy. In fact, this program realistically, I don't necessarily really even need the town to support me to do this. I could do this on my own. I was bringing it forward to this town and to this council because I thought it was an initiative that you would be proud to partner in and to offer to this community. It's not necessarily a policy. It would be a trial basis program and if it's something that was successful or that we felt was valuable, it's something that anyone else could replicate for whichever circumstances. So, I mean, I'm totally open to taking this back to staff and getting. So, I mean, I'm totally open to taking this back to staff and getting a report, I guess, with some more details. I personally don't think it's necessary, but if that's what this council requires to support this, then by all means. But like I said, this is something that can be offered without council's endorsement. It's more so, I wanted to share this opportunity with council, and I, I was fairly confident that this is something that you would all support and be happy to support. So I'm a little shocked that there's a little bit of kind of negative thoughts associated to this. That's, that's really disappointing. But like I said, if this council would like to put forth a new motion to amend it, to ask for more information, I can support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments, Councilor Rosie. I don't think the comments were necessarily negative that are taking place here. Certainly, you can, if you wanted to mentor, you could do that yourself. Nobody, and any, any one of us can do a mentoring program. It becomes a different issue when the mentoring program is the policy of a municipality. It really is a different boat, you know, kettle of fish or whatever the phrase is. So we could either approve it, we can either deny it, or we can ask council for a report. So I'm open for a, a motion. I think, Councilor Benrez, you were going to make the motion to ask staff for a report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I can make the motion to ask staff for a report.
Any seconder? Councilor Chapman? Further discussion on, on bringing this to staff? Okay, so let's, comment, Councilor.
Through you, worship. I did look into this program, and it states that it started in 2021 and that the program ends in 2024. I know that that doesn't mean that the mentorship ends, but the support to the program is from 2021 to 2024. And it's great that there's initiative to mentor women. However, we need a diversity of all, cultural, race, gender, all of those things. So to limit to one group, and I am a woman, and, and I have no problem with supporting women, but our council is a representation of our community, and even though women make up a 50% of the, the group, there's still another 50% that needs to be encouraged as well. And when you look at the fact that we were all acclaimed this year, all of the council were acclaimed because not enough people were willing to step forward. So if we're going to do a mentorship program, it should be a mentorship program for all.
Other comments? We have a resolution.
Yes. I wrote this based on Deputy Mayor Barber's statement earlier, so that council directs staff to prepare a report on the preparation of initiatives to promote involvement in the next municipal election with consideration of the FCM Protege Program.
Just clarification on that motion. So is this report not coming back to us then for another year, or how is this, when, when can we expect this report back?
Soon as it can be prepared.
Oh, okay. So ASAP. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor? And that is Carrie, thank you. Next item on nine, reading of bylaws from proceedings thereon, resolutions.
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 59-24 being a bylaw to dedicate certain lands as part of a, of the public highway, bylaw 62-24 being a bylaw to establish and adopt the terms of reference for the Old Town Hall Advisory Committee, bylaw 63-24 being a bylaw to appoint a deputy division register and deputy issuer of marriage licenses, Claire Van Bommel, and bylaw 64-24 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on September 4th, 2024, and bylaw 65-24 being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Simcoe Refrigeration for supply and install of rooftop HVAC packaged and thermal units.
Moving seconder? Councilor Chapman, Councilor Rosie. All those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Inquiries by members? Statements and committee reports? Councilor Benrez.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I have two comments, if you may. I was in the library the other day and had a comment from one of the staff. I was speaking with Mary, and she had mentioned that they have some senior residents that come in there and use the library, they access their services, and the comments were that they'd like to be more involved or have more knowledge of what's going on around town. They don't have as much, they don't have, they're not as active on social media, on websites. They may read the, the Elmer Express, but they were wondering if there was anything that we could do to help reach that population and let them know kind of what, what the town's doing or what's going on around town. So I want, I said I'd bring that up at council, maybe there's some ideas, maybe staff could have some ideas, that, that's the different ways to reach people that might not be on social media or on website, on our website. So that was the first comment. And then the second was, we already kind of discussed it, but just the change with the chief retiring, I wanted to thank the chief and congratulate deputy chief for his promotion, which is upcoming. Both of them have been very dedicated to the community of Elmer, so I want to thank them both.
Councilor Ozil.
You were here. We, Rob is replacing six trees on Tobble Street with a new watering system. The, they replaced three this week, and I assume they're going to replace three next week. Hopefully, we can't, we don't replace them in the next five years. I've been on council for 14 years, and we replaced the trees on Tobble Street four or five times.
These guys are going to live.
That's right.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Report the mayor, and I could report all the things that I've done in the last month, and I'm not going to do that. We had a great presentation today in Sheddon dealing with the government grants, as you know, provincial grants, as you all know, Elmer got 4.5 million for lagoons. I should mention that Township of Southworld got 27.7 million.
Wow.
Building of a treatment plant, which was more than the City of London got, so it was quite a wow factor to have do that. But certainly, our factor is just as much a wow factor because it's money that we can use in other places. So just another comment that, you know, our, the, the staff are constantly looking at applications for these kinds of things. They don't miss any. And so this was a long effort and a very concerted and collaborative method, so thank you to staff for bringing in $4.5 million. Any notices of motion? No meeting closed to the public? Adjournment?
That council do now adjourn at 8:18 PM.
Moving seconder? Councilor Rosie, Councilor Chapman. All those in favor? And it's not, no, it's Carrie.